Good afternoon, I'm Kim Melnick, School Board Chair, and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at four oh one on the thirteenth day of August twenty twenty-four. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please announce the role.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber is Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Owens. And we have no members, School Board members online at the moment.
Okay, perfect. All right. Please note, members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.bbschools.com forward slash meetings forward slash live, broadcast on VVTV, Channel forty-seven, and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us here in person, thank you, and online. Um, do, do any School Board members have anything to report for administrative matters? No. Um, I just wanted to thank my colleague, Mr. Callen, for joining me yesterday at the teacher orientation. Thank you, sir. It was eye-opening, it was a full theater, right? And um, a lot of excited, a lot of excited um, new teachers, some brand-new and some new to the division. And I won't say anything else because I'm sure you're gonna talk about that later, Dr. Robertson. Okay, and so we'll move on um, to Dr. Darnita Trotman, our Chief Human Resources Officer with the Summer Staffing Update. Very appropriate.
Good afternoon, Chair Melnick. Vice Chair Franklin, members of the School Board and Dr. Robertson, I am Darnita Trotman, Chief Human Resources Officer, accompanied by Ms. Anne Glenn Zellneck, Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention. This afternoon, we will provide an update of the Department of Human Resources' Summer Staffing Efforts. At this time, I am pleased to turn the presentation over to Ms. Glenn Zellneck.
Good afternoon. Our agenda for today's presentation includes critical shortages in the teaching workforce, particularly the decline in teacher preparation programs, staffing updates, and an overview of our recruitment and retention strategies. In addition to our other objectives, the Human Resources Department is particularly committed to Goal Four of Compass to two thousand twenty-five. We are continuously seeking to employ high-quality, diverse applicants, and our hiring managers fully support this initiative. Emma Garcia and Elaine Weiss, two thousand nineteen Report, The Perfect Storm in the Teacher Labor Market, highlights the critical issues of teacher shortages, emphasizing its profound impact on both students and the educational system. The shortage of qualified teachers and staff instability undermine students' learning experiences, reduces the effectiveness of current teachers, and increases turnover rates. This shortage disproportionately affects students from different socioeconomic backgrounds, challenging the United States Educational System's goal of equitable education for all children. Furthermore, the persistent shortage hampers efforts to build a strong professional reputation for teaching and elevate the profession's status, thereby perpetuating the cycle of the shortage and instability within the educational sector. A major factor contributing to the decline in teacher recruitment is fewer students are choosing teaching as a career. As shown on this map, student enrollment in teacher preparation programs has declined across our nation. Virginia was one of twenty states between two thousand and nine and two thousand twenty-one that reported a drastic decline. Virginia decreased by fifty-five point seven percent in the number of teacher preparation program enrollees. As you can see, only five states reported increases in teacher preparation programs during this time. Notably, many of the students in Texas are attending privately managed alternative certification programs. The declining number of students entering the teacher preparation programs results in a shrinking pool of new teachers failing to meet the growing demand. Factors such as the rising cost of higher education, working conditions, and compensation significantly impact candidates' decisions to enter the field of education. Another factor contributing to attracting and retaining staff is the ability to offer competitive salaries. Despite providing top-notch resources, the instability of the division to offer competitive salaries may jeopardize our ability to recruit top talent to our division. During the budgeting cycle this year, due to limited funding and the uncertainty of additional funding from the state, the School Division was faced with the possibility of providing little to no raises for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. However, thanks to the efforts of administration and due the School Board, the decision was made to implement raises for employees in two phases. On July first, employees in allocated positions received a step increase, representing a year of experience. On August first, employees in allocated positions received an average two percent increase on both unified and instructional pay scales. So where did this place the division compared to other school divisions in the local market? As you can see, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has fallen from its previous rank of fourth place during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year to seventh place for the entry-level teacher salaries for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. While there is still work to be done to improve the division's ranking, our goal is to remain focused on offering competitive compensation as outlined in Goal Four, Strategy One of Compass to two thousand twenty-five. Again, thank you to our School Board for your commitment and dedication to our employees and for supporting this goal. The housing market is another contributing factor to the decline in teacher recruitment. Households are considered cost-burdened when they spend more than thirty percent of their income on rent, mortgage, and other housing needs. In two thousand twenty-two, Ryan Murphy from National Public Radio analyzed the housing market, indicating that Hampton Roads is the least affordable major metropolitan area with a cost burden of thirty-four percent, surpassing the statewide average of twenty-nine point three percent and the nationwide average of thirty-one point eight percent. Recently, an article published by the Virginia Pilot Online again highlighted housing costs as a key factor driving young people to leave Hampton Roads. The median home price in the region has risen by four point three five percent over the past twelve months. Additionally, the average monthly rent has increased nearly twenty-seven percent over the past five years. This highlights the urgent need for both current staff and new teacher candidates to earn a competitive salary to afford living where they work. As we reflect on the factors previously mentioned, we are proud to recognize the outstanding work taking place in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, to focus on staffing our schools and departments. Staffing has become an ongoing effort throughout the year to ensure that our students have the best candidates supporting their education. The significant progress is a testament to the dedication of our hiring managers in collaboration with Human Resources staff. These collaborative staffing efforts are crucial in ensuring the success of our students as they bring together various departments to identify, recruit, and retain top talent. By working together, we can address the challenges and demands of staffing, creating a supportive and effective educational environment for all. Now let's review the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Critical Shortage Teaching Endorsement Areas and an update on all staff vacancies here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Each year, the Virginia Department of Education provides a list of critical shortage teaching endorsement areas. This year, the number of critical teaching shortage areas increased from seven to ten with the addition of history, social science, foreign language, and school counseling. In addition to the ongoing teaching shortage and declining enrollment in teacher preparation programs, the identification of three more critical shortage areas further complicates the challenge of staffing our schools. To assist with filling these vacancies, these critical shortage areas provide an opportunity to recruit Virginia retirees to work in hard-to-fill vacancies. If eligible, the retiree could continue to receive their monthly retirement benefit and earn a full salary. Now let's review the current vacancies in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Currently, there are a total of forty-four full-time and thirteen part-time instructional vacancies. Among these are elementary, literacy, science, fine arts, math, and world language teachers. Special education remains an area of focus. Recently, the Departments of School Leadership and Human Resources, along with the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, met to discuss these vacancies and the regulatory requirements related to special education. However, due to a critical shortage of special education personnel, this remains a focus area that we continue to monitor. To date, there are fifty-nine full-time and two part-time non-instructional vacancies. Among these are teacher assistants and maintenance craftsmen. We continue to face challenges in hiring bus assistants, custodians, and cafeteria assistants. The Department of Human Resources remains committed to working collaboratively with school administrators, departments, and offices to identify and fill these hard-to-staff positions. As a result of these collaborative efforts, we have successfully hired four hundred and sixty-two new instructional and non-instructional school-based employees. This achievement demonstrates our dedication to upholding Goal Four of Compass to two thousand twenty-five. Ensuring a high-quality and diverse workforce is crucial to our success. We leverage a range of programs, community outreach, and partnerships to attract and retain new candidates. The Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Program, available in our high schools, offers students a clear pathway to pursue careers and education. This program not only prepares them for teaching, but also provides them with the opportunity to work for Virginia Beach City Public Schools upon graduation. Additionally, we have established partnerships with local colleges and universities, as well as VDOE-approved licensure pathways, such as I Teach, to offer alternative licensure routes for current staff members who are interested in becoming teachers. Our job opportunities are widely shared through social media platforms and various job search websites, attracting candidates from across the nation. Our Human Resources staffing specialists play a crucial role in this process by engaging with student teachers and interns every semester, which helps in fostering early relationships with potential future hires. Furthermore, the Department of Human Resources actively participates in numerous recruitment events throughout the division. These include attending division-wide events, PTA meetings, graduations, and job fairs. We also collaborate closely with community organizations to enhance our outreach and attract a diverse pool of candidates. These comprehensive recruitment strategies ensure that we are continuously identifying and engaging with potential talent to meet the needs of our schools. To retain our workforce, the division enhances financial incentives, partnerships, health and wellness, and professional development opportunities. Financial incentives include grants and tuition reimbursement for eligible staff, supporting further education and development. The Employ Non-Resident Student Program enabled a hundred and twenty-five staff members to bring a hundred and seventy-five children to Virginia Beach City Public Schools during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, tuition-free. Teachers may earn special allowances for their National Board Certification or as career teachers, encouraging long-term growth. Partnerships with colleges and universities, along with VDOE-approved licensure programs, offer pathways for staff to become certified teachers. Discount opportunities afforded by the YMCA and Virginia Beach Park and Rec assist staff with childcare costs and offer drop-in services. Employee well-being and work-life balance are supported through volunteer and wellness leave for benefited eligible employees. Professional development includes mentorship, coaching, professional development support from the Department of Teaching and Learning, and the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation. In addition to these supports, interested staff can receive practice exam assistance and participate in leadership academies to prepare for growth opportunities within the division. Our comprehensive approach is dedicated to supporting every aspect of our employees' professional journey, personal well-being, and job satisfaction. By prioritizing these elements, we create a thriving, positive, and productive work environment where everyone can excel and feel fulfilled. How can you support VBCPS recruiting? Elevate and promote the profession of education. Highlight the excellent educational opportunities we provide for students and celebrate the remarkable achievements of our staff. Speak with family, friends, and neighbors about applying for employment opportunities with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Follow Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social media posts and share the positive news. As we conclude our Summer Staffing Update, rest assured that we will continue our efforts to ensure schools are ready to welcome students on the first day of school. This concludes our presentation, and at this time, staff from the Department of Human Resources is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation and for all of the work that I know is going on in our personnel offices. It's clearly getting harder and harder to recruit every year. Um, I was wondering on uh, looks like slide ten, if uh, we're able to have a little bit more specifics with the categories of vacancies. Do we know like how many are special education? How many are math teachers or science teachers?
We do have some of the data. Um, I can give you a full breakdown, and we can provide that if you want to know the full breakdown. Um, recently, we, there were three reading specialist vacancies. We know the reading specialist, the VLA, is coming down. Um, but we're working on that, so we feel good about that. Um, in terms of special education, ECSE continues to be a, a challenge to fill, and there were three ECSE vacancies. And so if you want more categories, we can give that to you. Um, those are just some of the ones that pop out, you know, in my mind.
Yep.
And let's see, currently we have, there were, I might do a little bit better than that, Ms. Owens.
Okay.
Um. Nineteen at the elementary level for instructional vacancies, fourteen at the middle school level.
Of those we have.
Yes, and eight, mhm. But if you want specific categories, we can certainly provide um, more detail around those.
Okay, thank you. And then uh, I had a question about uh, the four hundred and sixty-two hires is really impressive. Uh, is that from, starting from uh, the last day of school? Or is that all year since January? Where, where is our start and stop event number?
So ongoing efforts now have to be, when um, allocations are released, then we begin, um, honestly, we begin prior to that. If we can secure early commitments, and so it's hard to give a start, stop, and point, but that is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Like Mrs. Glenn Zellneck said, we start with recruiting our student teachers there with our children between eighteen, you know, the thirty-six weeks sometimes, depending on their placement. And so those efforts are ongoing for the next school year.
Okay, so the four hundred and sixty-two uh, is over any span of time, but there are new hires for this school year?
Yes, so basically, the bulk of um, the hiring, of course, takes place when allocations are received. But we are not in that climate any longer where we can wait. And so we have to offer early. So those student teachers that are placed in the fall, we go out to visit them. Uh, we work with them, we uh, build that rapport so that we can attract those candidates early on. Um, so I don't know if I answered your question fully, but it is, you know, an effort that goes all year long.
Okay, one last question if I, okay. Um, well, I'm obviously disappointed to see that we have fallen again down to, to number seven. In terms of our uh, kind of other benefits, with the health and wellness or the wellness days, are we offering the same number of wellness days this year or less than we were offering last year?
It is one day this year.
Okay, that's what I remembered, but I, I wanted to make sure. As a, as a board, as the ones making the decision, we are putting, making it difficult to say we're taking away wellness days that you had last year. We're gonna be number seven in terms of uh, salary. You're gonna have more days in the building with students, uh, more than the other districts. And I, I wish I had a better answer other than to say I, I know that we're not making it easy. And so hopefully, it's something we'll, as a board, keep in mind as we are um, struggling to keep up with the loss, loss of teachers. Thanks.
Ms. Brown? Thank you, thank you so much, and I know that you guys are doing everything that you can. Um, I appreciate all your hard work. Um, so there was some slides about the instructional um, pay that showed that we're number seven for starting pay, which I don't love, but um, I think we've done uh, this year unfortunately, the, the best that we were able to do. Um, and you know, we also don't have a crystal ball to tell what the other divisions uh, were going to do after us either. Um, and that, that did unfortunately create some uh, some challenges surrounding that. But um, I was wondering, since we have, and if you'll go to slide eleven, actually, I'm sorry. On slide eleven, um, it talks about the hard-to-staff positions. Um, those bus assistants, custodians, cafeteria assistants. Um, it, it appears that those vacancies are also um, pretty significant. I mean, everybody collaborates together to make a really great uh, educational system for our Virginia Beach students. And I was curious if we have a comparison for these positions um, to those same divisions that we compared for our instructional staff. Does that make sense?
It does, I understand your point.
Yeah, the, the compensation compared to the same, um, you know, seven. I know that the, the instructional vacancies are important and that pay is important, but I'm also curious how we compare to other nearby divisions in those other um, areas that are hard to staff.
Yes, I'll say that uh, we can anecdotally say we're in a better position than our colleagues outside of Chesapeake. Chesapeake's in a better position than we are, they have fewer vacancies. Um, the data that is shared today uh, is different than the data we looked at yesterday because every day we're processing new hires and unfortunately, processing people who are deciding not to come back. So it's a moving target. Um, when we look at those particular areas where bus assistants are a big concern, I met with Mr. Freeman today, we're gonna be giving you the board an update next week on some uh, things you need to be aware of as we open schools. Um, cafeteria assistants, custodians, we continue to work on that. In our senior staff retreat next week, we're gonna do a dilemma. We talk about staffing classified employees. What are we not doing? What are we missing to attract those employees, but also retain them? Um, and you know, as we talk about salary, I hope to tell you, the board has done a phenomenal job the last two years. So no one should uh, sitting on the desk should feel that you haven't done what you, everything you could from a salary standpoint. You get amount of money from the federal government, state, and the local, then you have to decide how to use it. And um, two years ago, we were, we had the funds and we gave an enormous raise, which saved us. And this year, we got, we got the three point five percent. And I'm happy about where we are. Uh, we, we have plans to make sure we're covering all of our classrooms on the first day of school. But to Ms. Owens, we, we, we work on hiring all year long. We, we get a student teacher, they get bombarded by us if, if they're good. And we stay on them because we don't want them to go. Um, and we stay on them, because we don't want them to go to another place and then forget us.
Yeah, and I, I just would ask, um, if there's a way for me to get the comparison, uh, just to be concise for Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake, Suffolk, Newport News and Hampton, and where we stand as far as pay compared to their bus assistants, custodians and cafeteria assistants, and I think that's that's the information that I'm, uh, really trying to, um, get. And, you know, I, I think that the housing market costs are concerning and uh, the lack of people entering the profession, you know, when I moved here to Virginia Beach fifteen years ago, I thought Charlottesville, Virginia was a very expensive, high cost of living, and I got here to Virginia Beach and you gotta drive thirty minutes to get anywhere, so you have not just higher housing costs, but you have higher transportation costs, and so I think that's gone up for everyone, and I don't know that there's anything uh, we can really do to change that, but hopefully the market corrects itself here shortly.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning. Thank you, I have a few questions. On slide ten, you indicate forty-four full-time, open, um, vacancies. Can you give me an idea of, uh, how many total full-time instructional positions we have, total? I'm trying to figure out forty-four out of how many, like total instructional positions do we have? Do we have three thousand?
Roughly five thousand.
Five thousand, so, so we are only, we only have forty-four vacancies out of five thousand.
Absolutely, and I do wanna say that last year our vacancy rate was one point seven percent. And I believe our teacher retention rate is ninety-one percent, so you're absolutely correct.
So this is remarkable.
I would think, uh, we'd like to think so.
Uh, so this is phenomenal, um, kudos, I mean, we're doing something right here. Um, I have a question on slide ten, we don't address, uh, bus driver, do we have any bus driver vacancies?
Yeah, they did, we do.
Mr. Freeman and I met today and, uh, Mr. Trump, that number is escaping me, twenty-two? Twenty-two.
Uh, just like Dr. Robertson mentioned earlier, that number changes on a daily basis. So for today, twenty-two, like Dr. Robertson mentioned, we're gonna send you guys an update next week, um, by email, so that you can see some critical factors related to that, and that's gonna be one of the factors that we're gonna share with you, uh, and what the protect, uh, potential impact.
Okay, but hopefully we'll have all routes covered again like we did last year?
Uh, all, well, it won't, they won't all be covered with a driver, but we, uh, double up and we double back to be able to check out for those. Which is not ideal, but it does work.
Okay, great. Um, my next question is, I know that there was some new legislation and some new rules from the VDOE on certifications for who can be a teacher right now, especially with our career in technical education, are we taking advantage of those new rules?
We absolutely are, and so universal reciprocity, also the one-year local eligibility. There's, um, things for military spouses, and so we are on top of that and taking advantage of all new legislative, um, updates that have come forth.
Are we seeing that people are aware of this and, um, taking advantage of it?
We're putting the information out, they may not be aware of it, but we are. So when we have a candidate that applies and we know that there's something that we can do, then we do it. Um, but certainly, yes, we'll push information out, our lic- our licensure department. But when we spring those candidates, we know what we can do to assist them.
Right, great. Well, and, you know, I, I wanna speak from a recruiting position here, you know, we need, we need to do our part on promoting that. And I think, you know, the, the chart sit- showing that we're number seven looks a little dismal. I wanna point out that's only for starting teacher level pay. Much more competitive than that, and I believe our health benefits and our benefits package are probably at the top one or two. Um, would be my guess, um.
I see some.
I mean, if we look at total package, I think we're much more competitive than this chart shows. So I, I don't want to people to see this and be discouraged and say, I'm gonna go apply in, um, you know, Portsmouth or Norfolk. So, thank you guys all, you, you've, you've done a fantastic job, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, oh, yes, go ahead.
So, was just pointed out that that was a first-year teacher, uh, salary scale.
Yes.
When people move here, let's say, military spouses, and they have been teaching at other places for, you know, four, five, six years, do they start at the first level? Or do they get compensated on a level that reflects their, um, experience?
Absolutely, the experience, and so, um, there's also legislation that came down that Virginia schools have ten days to provide employment verification, which helps greatly. So we're all mandated now to give that information within ten days. So yes, ma'am, when we get the verification request, then we place them on the salary that they earn due to their years of service.
Is it even if it's from out of state?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If they have taught in schools and accredited public school, yes, ma'am, they also get their years of service.
Thank you, we need to publicize that more as well, because we do get a lot of military spouses that move into the area who have taught in other places. I think that's something we need to stress more, you know, check us out.
Absolutely.
Mr. Callan.
Yes, I see that on slide number five, it indicates that we have fewer students choosing teaching as a career. We've addressed one way of looking at it, maybe more than one way of looking at it, through a financial lens, whether that's compensation or housing costs and whatnot. But whether it's new candidates coming in from the college arena, as an example, or as Dr. Robertson was referencing, just retaining our existing teachers. The question that I ask is, have we considered a reassessment of our practices relative to discipline in the classroom? Because one of the things that you can see in a regular and ongoing basis is the number of articles that address the proliferation of behavior problems, and in fact, that can be part of the reason why people are either saying thanks, but no thanks, I don't need to come into this arena, this is crazy, or I'm dealing with crazy and I'm done. And I've got to exit and go do something else. So we've made reference and an emphasis on the financial perspective. And I'm wondering what we are considering doing relative to the behavioral perspective.
I'll take that, Mr. Callan, because I'm not certain that's an HR question all the way. I think what, the way I'd respond to that is a couple ways. I think we have to message a little bit better that our classrooms aren't completely out of control. And I think oftentimes we message that these classrooms are completely out of control. When you look at our data in Virginia Beach, we're well over ninety percent on perceptions of a safe classroom from our staff, from our parents and our students. We tend to, uh, really focus on those situations that occur, and we don't always celebrate the great things that go on every day in our classrooms with amazing teachers, amazing students and amazing partnerships with parents. So I believe there's a lot of that as a messaging thing. Um, we get the privilege of walking into schools all the time and visiting classrooms, and we do not see that level of danger or misbehavior. That's a strong term for me to use, the danger part. From a standpoint of working with, uh, with teachers, oftentimes we find that that is a challenge in this, in the prep programs. It's how to effectively manage a classroom, so we have to spend a lot of time with our coaches, our businesses and other coaches to ensure they know how to set up a really productive learning environment. I've not seen, uh, that concern so much around how schools are operating uh, around teachers not wanting to get in, more so than, uh, how much they get paid and other things, and also how they're viewed as professionals. I think oftentimes over the last few years, in my thirty years of education, I've seen a decline in how we view the importance of teachers and what they bring to the community. They're under much greater scrutiny than they were when I got in in nineteen ninety-four. They have much greater demands around SOL and standardized testing and accreditation that did not exist for years. And I think for many, that pressure is greater than what's perceived as a dangerous environment in the classroom.
Do you see anything new in the exit surveys that are given relative to this is the reason I'm saying sayonara?
I certainly, we certainly will have people say they're concerned about what they're seeing in the classroom with student behavior. And, and I will also say, that was not abnormal thirty years ago either. I mean, as a first-year teacher, I can distinctly remember people going, this profession has changed, you don't wanna be in this profession. Uh, and I always felt like that messaging was what was gonna turn great, great people from doing great work with individuals. I'm not hearing that as often as we hear some of the other things around the pay and the other components that are, you know, housing and others. I don't think it's near that, I don't think student behavior is near the level of the arc, the concerns around pay and, um, and the pre- demands of the job that go beyond student behavior.
Hello, um, just a thought or a question, you know, there was an article in the pilot the other day about the fact that so many employers are really looking at work experience rather than just education. Um, when they're hiring, uh, they're finding that those that have been out in the workforce are dependable and hardworking and um, might not bring the degree necessarily, but also bring a lot of other factors that are important to success in the workplace. So my, one of my questions is, because we always talk about workforce engagement, um, and opportunities. I, I, I would just be curious, we, if we could find out, um, what, for example, if we have a teacher assistant, um, you know, what is the requirement for the, the next step to becoming a full ter- full-term teacher? Um, and, you know, do we, and do we provide educational opportunities? Because there are so many that might not have the opportunity, single moms, for example, um, to go back to college, uh, within a certain timeframe. Um, so I'm just curious what we're doing to think, kind of think outside of the box, um, in, ensuring we're able to fill some of these positions. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, um, certainly, and so the Department of Human Resources, we do attend the Professional Development Day in January, um, where teacher assistants, um, they sign up for the session. So we do have flyers and we go out and present alternate pathways to licensure. And so even, in fact, today, we, um, were on a meeting with a college about a teacher residency program geared directly to teacher assistants um, in hard-to-staff schools. And so there are several pathways. Um, I teach as one, where you don't have to have the degree, you can have the degree. So it's, um, paced at your own, um, asynchronous pace. So there are several things, yes, that we do to promote, and several programs and partnerships that we have already.
Do you have that in a, maybe a PDF format that I, that you could just send to us?
We can.
Uh, I, I, if you have it prepared, that would be amazing, if, if not, then we can just.
We have, we have, certainly, we have things that we can send and share.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great to.
I'll also share, um, I'm not gonna tell you who they are, but we have two principals right now who were hired in Virginia Beach as teacher assistants.
Nice, I love that.
So, and we just expanded a program with Virginia Wesleyan College, um, for, to target our teacher assistants. Where they go with a great, greatly reduced tuition amount, we, we're exploring, well, one of five school divisions got selected by this this university to, that residency program that we put in for, so we uncover every rock to create opportunities for anyone who wants to learn. We have practice assistants, uh, for these teachers, so, yeah, if you have a willingness and a desire, we got you.
That is, that's amazing, and, uh, you know, it's, it's very much in the, in the nature of, like, enterprise run a car, you have to start from the bottom to get to the top. So, you know, so I think that that is a great way to ensure that you understand how, you know, the nuts and bolts of, of how everything works, so, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll always say, um, retention is the new recruitment, and so we seek them out. We run our list, we know which of our TAs and general assistants have degrees. And so we will seek them out and send information as well.
Wonderful, thank you, great presentation.
Okay, and so one last comment and question, so the question is, just giving you a hypothetical. We have a special education bus that requires an assistant on the first day of school. They don't have one. How, what do we do on that first day of school?
So that scenario, because that's a scenario we're going to face, the first day of school. And if, uh, the information we'll give you on Tuesday, we'll outline that, but basically this. If we have a special needs student who requires a bus assistant, and we don't have a bus assistant, that bus run will be a double back.
Okay.
So they, they'll get to school, but we're gonna be in situations the first week of school where, um, kids will be picked up on a second run.
Okay, fair enough. Um, also before you oh, hello, Dr. Myers.
Hello, I was just gonna share, last year we had similar situation with teacher assistants, so IEP meetings were held to discuss that if an assistant wasn't available, what the parent's option was.
Okay.
And they selected that, and we documented that in the IEP.
Okay, great. So then one comment for you guys, as I know you work around the clock, but we often forget to mention to the public that we are twice the size of any of our neighboring school districts. And so to Mrs. Manning's statistical point, we're doing really well, and I applaud everything that you're doing um, to recruit and retain, but we are twice everyone's size.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's great that Chesapeake's doing a little bit better, but not really, because they're half our size. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all. All right, and next up, we welcome Mr. Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer for the New Construction Guidance and Direction. And if you remember, he told us to be prepared for this meeting today for guidance, and so, welcome, sir.
Uh, thank you, uh, good afternoon Chair Melick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board and Dr. Robertson. Uh, when we last met during the school board retreat in July, we told you we'd be coming back to you today to receive direction for the order of priority for the next two new construction schools. Upon further consideration, to effectively receive direction from this elected body, it's most appropriate to receive that guidance through an action item. So with that as a goal, we will share this brief with you today during workshop, and we'll come back to you at the next meeting for information. And then the first meeting in September, we will return for your action. So let's start with some history. So back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we conducted our first long-range facility master plan. And in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, partly because of that work, Princeanne High School, uh, first entered the capital program. In two thousand seventeen and eighteen, we had our second long-range facility master plan. And then in twenty twenty-one, Williams entered the capital program for the first year. In twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we went through a PPA process that included over thirty, uh, community and school meetings. And then in this calendar year, starting in January, we, uh, shared with you the PPA thirty percent design and funding overview. Uh, we adopted, you adopted, the FY twenty-five CIP. Um, and then on April sixteenth, we came back to you to get, uh, to have a discussion about Williams and Bayside Six. We received that guidance, and then at the next meeting, we came back and, uh, gave you a follow-up from that guidance. On May twenty-eighth, we had a discussion about the CIP maintenance projects. And then on June tenth, we did a similar process that we did with Williams and Bayside Six for Princeanne High School. Um, and got your guidance and then gave you a follow-up at the school board retreat on July tenth. And then on July tenth, we also gave you the comprehensive new construction conversation to get us here. So the task at hand is for the school board to decide the order of the next two school construction projects in the CIP. Will it be Williams Bayside Six or some version of that, or will it be Princeanne High School? Here's a flow chart that is intended to help simplify the process. You can see the "we are here" in red, and staff needs your direction. For example, do we go to the Williams side of the flow chart or the Princeanne High School side? If we go to the Williams side, then at a later time, we will need your direction for whether we'll be building a four-five school or a four-five-six school. Once we know that, staff can then finalize the educational specifications to prepare for a bid in twenty twenty-six. If building a four-five school, we will then need to discuss how to proceed with the students at Bayside Six. And if Williams is next, it will be a good idea to ensure that we are aligned around the plan for Holland Road Annex. If the board were to choose Princeanne High School as the next priority school, there is a similar process, including a potential discussion for the Bayside Six students. We need to keep this as simple as possible and focus on the task at hand. Staff needs to know whether we're going with Williams or some version of that or Princeanne High School. Are we going right or are we going left? Everything below will be resolved by continuing to work through the problem and solving those items sequentially. This is not the time to deep dive in any of the items that are grayed out. It is not the time to talk about wishes for designs of the buildings. It is not the time to talk about right sizing, and it's not the time to talk about programs in the buildings. For this brief and the next one, and then the action item. For this brief and the next one, and then the action item, we encourage you to focus on the information related to going right or left. Everything grayed out can be solved as needed, depending upon whether we go right or left. So continuing with our history, we conducted a long-range facility master plan every ten years. The first was '07-'08, as we talked about earlier. The next was '17-'18. And we're on track then to complete the next one in '27-'28. On the left, you can see the schools prioritized during the '07-'08 plan. All of those have been resolved, except for Princeanne High School. Princeanne High School has been a project in the capital program since then. On the right, you can see the results of the '17-'18 Long Range Facility Master Plan facilities' conditions. Go to the far-right column and you will see the total condition index. Higher numbers are worse and schools are listed from worst to less worse. So Old Aragona, which is our current Bayside Six, scores the worst. Because we have a solution for Bayside Six under either new construction option, we won't be focusing on that today. Princeanne High School scores the second worst and Williams scores the seventh worst from a total condition index perspective. Let's go one and two columns over. There you can see the educational adequacy factor and the school facility condition index. These are the two measures which are combined to make the total condition index. Under the school facility condition index, Princeanne High School ranks third and Williams fourth. So those are pretty close. The educational adequacy is really where the difference is. Princeanne High School scored the worst of all the schools on the list at number one and Williams was tenth. I expect there will be several questions regarding this data. In short, this is an industry standard practice to determine the condition of the building to support the intended educational environment. And we can take your questions at the end of the brief. According to the total condition index, Princeanne High School is the second worst behind Bayside Six and Williams is the seventh. When we put schools into the capital program for replacement, we become very focused on not wasting money on fixes or upgrades that may only be in place for several years. For example, we wouldn't want to spend millions of dollars replacing an entirely functioning but finicky HVAC system. So we do whatever is a reasonable balance of risk to maintain a suitable environment in the building without large capital at least. And we call this deferred maintenance. When Princeanne High School was first listed in the CIP in '08-'09, we began the process of deferred maintenance. And that was fifteen years ago. If Williams is selected as the priority replacement project, we would need to continue deferring maintenance at Princeanne High School for another fourteen years. There are fourteen building systems being monitored at Princeanne High School to prevent failure. This includes well-known concerns like roof, thirty-two HVAC units, fire systems, and pump station components for sewage. It's difficult to project the cost needed to address the failures we can expect during that time. There are just too many uncertainties. However, we are confident that continuing to defer maintenance on Princeanne High School will cost at least twice as much as deferring maintenance at Williams. Williams first made it into the capital program four years ago and we've been deferring maintenance on those systems for about four years. If Princeanne High School is selected as a priority replacement, we estimate an additional sixteen years of deferred maintenance at Williams. There are twelve building systems being monitored to prevent failure and those systems are similar to Princeanne High School, just smaller due to the smaller size of the school. For example, you can see the eight HVAC systems compared to Princeanne High School's thirty-two. We estimate that it will cost half as much to defer maintenance at Williams when compared to Princeanne High School. From a deferred maintenance perspective, there is more risk at Princeanne High School than at Williams and a corresponding potential for greater cost to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. You saw this slide at the retreat. This projects the debt service impact for Williams-Bayside Six. The red line is our current fifty million dollar debt service limit. If Williams was chosen as the priority school, we would need to increase debt service by two million dollars per year for five consecutive years, starting no later than FY30. You saw this slide at the retreat as well. This projects the debt service impact for Princeanne High School if it was chosen as the next priority school. Debt service would need to be increased by three point eight million for seven consecutive years, starting no later than FY28. And we showed you some things to consider at the retreat indicating that this is achievable. We mentioned at the retreat the need to think strategically, not just isolate our analysis and thinking to just one school over the next several years. Let's look at what the math says about doing not just the next school, but the next two schools. This is a new slide. Davenport ran the numbers and developed these graphs and they're similar in format to the previous two. But now they depict the impact on debt service when you do Williams first, then Princeanne, and that's the graph on the left. Or if you do Princeanne High School first, then Williams, that's the graph on the right. Let's start on the left with Williams. The dark green bars are debt that we have already incurred and we're paying it down. The light green is the debt that we would incur on the first school and that's Williams in this graph. The light green also accounts for keeping our maintenance project funding indexed for inflation. And the blue bars are debt resulting from the second school being built and that's Princeanne High School on this graph. The graph on the right shows the data for the scenario with Princeanne High School going first and Williams second. The dark green bars are the same. Light green is now Princeanne High School and maintenance and the light blue is Williams. I know the numbers are small and challenging to read, but even visually, you can see the impact. Look at the slope of debt service increases on the left and compare them to the right. On the left, the top five years of debt service increase requirements are twelve million, twenty million, sixteen million, twenty-two million, and fifteen million. And those are from thirty-nine to forty-three. And I know that's a lot of information that you can't look at. But the two projects that we're talking about, so Princeanne High School, for example, we're talking about three point eight million dollars over seven consecutive years. What we're trying to show you here is rather than three point eight, the numbers are twelve, twenty million, sixteen million, twenty-two million, and fifteen million. So if you go to the right, the top five years of debt service increase requirements are seven million, thirteen million, eight million, twelve million, and four million. And those are the same years from thirty-nine to forty-three. And in FY45, at the completion of the second project, the debt service requirement is projected to be twenty-five million dollars less in the Princeanne High School first example. We told you at the retreat to focus on debt service and that staff can sort out the allocations and that is still true. But because we're an organization interested in spending taxpayers' dollars responsibly and wisely, we should understand the consequences of going with Williams or Princeanne first. In the Williams first scenario on the left, total allocations required after the second school is built is estimated to be seven hundred and thirty-five million dollars. That's the number in red on the graph on the left below the chart. In the Princeanne High School first example on the right, total allocations required after the second school is built is estimated to be five hundred and eighteen million dollars. Again, that's the number in red below the graph on the right. The difference in estimated allocations between the two scenarios is over two hundred million dollars. That's the most up-to-date information we have on finances. Any decision like this should consider our students. Our bias, you say, put students first. There are likely many different qualitative lenses to look through. Let's try to quantify the impact. We're all familiar with man-hours of work. Five people working on a job for two hours, ten man-hours of work. You can do a similar calculation for student years of impact. Williams serves two grade levels and about four hundred students each year. We project the population will decrease to about three hundred, but we kept it at four hundred to indicate a worst-case scenario. So with four hundred total students remaining in the building for an additional twelve years, that's forty-eight hundred student years of impact if Williams was selected as the priority school. The other student impact is the individual student impact. If a student was to spend two years of their thirteen-year Virginia Beach City Public School career at this older building, that would represent about fifteen percent of their Virginia Beach City Public School career. Princeanne High School has four grade levels with a total of about seventeen hundred students and that's regular education and special education students. Seventeen hundred students times twelve years gives twenty thousand four hundred student years of impact if Princeanne High School is selected, is not selected as the priority school. The individual student impact is four years at an aging Princeanne High School building, which represents thirty-one percent of their thirteen-year Virginia Beach City Public School career. Again, we can have discussions about the qualitative impact in those two scenarios. This exercise was intended to quantify the impact on individual students and groups of students who will be impacted by the decision. All right, we're almost ready to open this up for questions and discussion. Remember, staff is seeking your direction. We just needed to know whether we're going to go right or whether we're going to go left. Once we know that, we can progress through all the necessary steps. We will come back to you on August 27th with a similar brief as an information item and then we'll come back again on September 10th for action. With that, we will take your questions and then open it up for discussion.
Mr. Kellon, you were there from the last time. I just wanted to make sure you still have a, you have a question? I'll leave you first.
I don't, but I'll take advantage of the opening.
All right, I hear you would.
I would like to thank you for the message, the methodology, and the comprehensiveness of this report. This is helpful and greatly appreciated.
I will accept that on behalf of the tremendous staff who all contributed to make sure that we are providing the best information we can.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you, just one question. So when we're looking at slides nine and ten, which are the debt service analysis of Princessanne High School and then the long-term cost comparison of both schools, I'm just looking at the one page. Is this based on the buildings in their current thirty percent design? So say, if we were to go with some form of Williams-Bayside Six, but it wasn't exactly what it is, is there some possibility that this may shift?
So to your point, so for this one, this represents, you can see up at the top where it says one oh five point five. So that represents a four-five-six school. So if we were to go down the flow chart at a future time and in that flow chart, the direction was we're going to go with a four-five school, that comparative number would come down, depending upon where it fell in the, in the timing. As you know, inflation will be a factor if it gets picked as the second priority, but it will be a relatively lower comparative number. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I had one more question. So, you know, we've talked a lot about how kicking the can down the road and waiting makes the cost go up. So I'm just curious, and you know, I would be interested to hear my colleagues' thoughts, but it would seem to me that deciding sooner than September 10th might kind of help. I know it's only a couple of weeks, but we just had this presentation. I don't know if it's going to be the same presentation in our next meeting, but I would be curious to hear your thoughts on that.
We will shape the information that we provide at the next two meetings based on the feedback that we get from this meeting. So if there are questions that we need to follow up with and answer, we'll do that. But we're going to come back to you with similar information that's been presented here, including any questions you may have to clarify. From a process standpoint, I know that there is a process related to getting to an action item. We are very confident with the process and the timing. Ultimately, this is going to allow us to do the work to set up a budget for next year to be able to execute what's requested and the intention is to get it out for bid in '26. So back to your question, would it help out anything significantly to do this any quicker? I think my answer is no, that would not, and I'll defer to Dr. Robertson if he sees it any differently.
We're very confident in this and it also honors the entire process. You guys have a difficult decision to make and we will make up the time. We're ready to go. All we need is right or left.
Ms. Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I guess since you're going to be shaping it and I don't know how much, I feel like this was a very complicated piece, so I don't know how much reshaping of this you could do, but I would be interested, since there were so many of us that wanted to evaluate, just doing the four-five, what this might look like if we only did the fourth and fifth grade. And I know it'd be a very rough, it's not going to be as concise as it.
Again, we just need to know whether we're going to go with the Williams side of the, we just need to know whether we're going right or left. We can provide you all those, all those things. It is not going to be a very accurate number. That is all based on a thirty percent design that incorporated comprehensive discussions and guidance from the School Board, even as a follow-up after the thirty percent design. And I think, so we have a member of Davenport on the line and I don't know that he needs to be able to speak to this, but we asked that exact same question. From a relative impact of that, this, between these and the long-term charts, it's just not going to move the needle enough. I mean, there will be a difference, because clearly if it's not a hundred and five, it's going to be something that's less than that. But I'll also take the opportunity to share, so you guys remember when we did the exercise back in January about inflation? And the example that we used at that time was a doubling one penny every day and whether, what that was going to result in after thirty days and, or if you were given a million dollars. There's another comparison that I've been kind of chewing on over time. And for anybody who's done any kind of personal financial management, there's a discussion about if you start when you're twenty, you need to put in a relatively smaller amount for a period of time. And if you stopped when you were forty and then you got compared against somebody who started when they're forty, they have to put in massively more dollars and they have a hard time catching up. So the reason I brought this up to Princeanne High School, so the comparison here is, we've been, since 2008, nine hundred million dollars roughly lost in buying power is what we're on track for and it's because we stayed in level funding. So we can look at ourselves like we're the forty-year-old who didn't start saving. Or we can also, because we're not humans, this is a school division, it's going to be around much longer than that, we can also look at ourselves like the twenty-year-old of, hey, if we just start putting a little bit more money away now, that's going to get us a benefit over time. So when you look at this one, we're not putting very much money into the program from a debt service and that's going to eat us up from inflation. Whereas if you do this, and then I'll bring up this one, look at the one on the right and how much more smooth that is for the impact on the debt service over time. So if you do a comparison of that twenty-year-old and that forty-year-old, act like the twenty-year-old putting money away earlier, that tends to go more towards the right side in comparison to one on the left where if you don't start when you're early, you've got to do massive amounts to be able to catch up. I hope that answered your question.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you for that example just now that, you know, I would wish, I wish we could do them both because I feel like the need is there. But because of what you've shown us on Slide 11, if you'll bring that up, Slide 11, it really convinces me that we need to go right. Because when you show this and how it impacts the students and how many years it impacts them and the years of their career in our VBCPS, we're going to impact more students, a lot more students, if we do Princessanne High School. So I just, I'm just, I feel like, thank you so much. I really appreciate you giving us this Slide 11 because it has, I was really indecisive until I saw this and this convinces me that I think we should go with Princessanne, so.
Ms. Manning?
Okay, I'm, I'm still undecided on this, but one, two of my main concerns are, I, I've, I've, for a number of years now, I've had concerns with the number of transitions that our students in the Bayside community have. By the time they get to middle school, they are in their fifth school. And, and so whether or not we do Princess Anne for, you know, if we do Princess Anne first, I wanna have a solution for those students with the number of transitions that they're having. And then my second concern is the cost of maintaining that old Aragona building if we go with Princess Anne. I see the advantages of going with Princess Anne, but those are my two concerns. So I don't know if anybody can alleviate those concerns before the next meeting.
So I, I think I can touch on both of them. So let's talk, uh, we'll go with the second one first, so the old Aragona building. So you mentioned if we do Prince Anne High School first, what do we do related to the old, this, the old Aragona building? And what you mean by is the students in that building?
Well, I'm not, I'm talking about also the building itself and the cost to maintain it.
Right. So in that example, the school board, whichever scenario we go in, and we had this discussion when we talked about the design, there is an option to say, all right, we're gonna transition those students from the old Aragona building back into the middle school and align them with every other middle school that we have. That's a, that's a, that's a conversation we would expect if we go down that road. To your point of how much would we have to maintain it, if the, there was a decision to be able to move those students and realign them, then that would alleviate the concern related to the maintenance piece. So much more discussion that we would need to have if we got, found ourselves in that position, but that's the, the short version of we would need to work through. And then the first question was related to.
Number of the transitions that the students have, and that might be at Dr. Robertson, or, you know, that might be more of an instructional.
Well, so, and, and that's a concern I've heard from multiple board members. And so certainly if, whatever decision is made, whether you go right or left, the next decision for, if you go left, is gonna be, do you wanna do a four-five-six, or do you wanna do a four-five? And if the decision is to do a four-five, then what do we do with the sixth graders? And again, we are confident they can go right back into this seven, eight school with all the other middle schools, and, and, and they're gonna be in a great situation, and we can do that rather quickly. We're not waiting for years to do that. That can happen quickly. Not this year, obviously, but it, it, it might even be able to happen mid-year next year to move those kids over and, and free up that building for whatever the board wants to do with that building. Then there could be another discussion, you know, and, and that discussion is, you know, we've, we've, and I'm not gonna share that discuss, that, the solution on the day is, because people are gonna go, oh, well, they're working behind the scenes, and they've already thought about something else. But there's another solution that we can do to address the transitions at that school that would be much less expensive. If you just hang with us for a little while.
Okay, all right, thank you, and thank you for your work. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Kendrick?
Wow, Dr. Robertson.
I know, that's what I was.
That was a teaser, okay? Like, stay tuned to the next episode. So my question was along the same lines as my colleague Vicki Manning. As it pertains to two of the slides, slide eleven and slide seven, when it talks about the student years of impact as well as the deferred maintenance, I, I, I would like to have seen Bayside Six included in that, because we're kind of looking at this data comparatively, and we haven't decided if, regardless of if we go to the right or the left, if we're going to, if that's gonna be a factor. And as it stands, you know, especially based on slide number six, where we're looking at the facility condition of Old Aragona, Bayside Six, that is quite alarming, especially under the school faculty condition index, which, you know, it's not the worst. So I think it would be helpful to us as board members, as we're making this decision, to also have the Bayside Six data around the student years' impact as well as the deferred maintenance information included with Bayside Six included in that discussion. And finally, oh, that data. And finally, for me, because I was not here, I do have a question around a side three with the PPEA process and the thirty community and school board meetings that were held. Can I have a little more information about, you know, what, what we were engaging the community about specifically? Was it just the Bayside Six, Betty F. Williams, or was it the entire CIP list? I just need a little more information on that, which looks like was conducted in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the PPEA included three schools. And as part of those three schools, before we ever entered into that, we came to the school board for direction of whether to design a four-five Williams school or a four-five-six. That discussion then followed with community input. And based on that input, although it was not a tremendous amount of input, the input put the school board in a position to be able to say, direct staff to say, we're gonna build a four-five-six school at Williams. So with that, we had the four-five-six school at Williams that was included, we had Prince Anne High School, and we had Bayside High School. So we conducted those thirty meetings, were divided across those three schools to develop the thirty percent designs for those three schools.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the, we engaged the community over thirty meetings about Betty F. Williams and Bayside Six, not Princess Anne.
So that was divided across the three, so I'm not gonna say this is perfect, but probably about ten meetings over at the Williams Bayside Six.
And not Princess Anne?
Yeah.
Yes, it was Princess Anne?
Okay, Prince Anne High School and Bayside High School.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And can you repeat the first question, because I think we got, we might be able to cover that one as well?
I, the first was a request for the next meeting that we have, if you could include the Bayside Six data for the deferred maintenance as well as the student years of impact, I think that would be helpful for us to have.
So we can do that, it would be a, there would be some caveats to that, because it would be, when would those students vacate the Aragona property? And so what I mean by that is, would the assumption be that we're building a four-five school and that the school board would decide to keep them in the old Aragona property for that entire period of time? Or is the school board gonna make a choice at some point in the future not to keep them in the building and potentially move them to Bayside Middle School? Or is the, and I, I realize, I try to go down the matrix, although I feel some of them are unlikely. Or would there be a decision to not build a four-five-six school, to save money and build a four-five school, without a corresponding decision to move them back into Bayside Middle School? So I think your question is, can we do, just use the same number of years that Williams would be waiting and say that it's gonna be a four-five-six school? But that's not the required decision for whether we go with Williams or Bayside Six first. Does that make sense? So it might be, I'm concerned about the false information of, hey, here's what it would be when it's based, when the school board could decide at some point this year, hey, we're gonna put those students back into a known building, and that's Bayside Middle School. Does that make sense, though, the?
It makes sense, but when we're talking about deferred maintenance, I think it makes sense for us to at least have some more information or insight around Bayside Six, because they are part of this discussion, and because of slide six, that shows the facility condition. But we just, we need to have, we need to have them included in the conversation.
So we can do that. It would seem like what we would do is we would just pick the twelve additional years and make an assumption that they would only be in the four-five school with the very strong caveat that the, the school board could make a decision at any time that would change that. Whereas that's not the case for the two new construction schools, the two new construction schools. There is, if you choose one school over the other, there is nothing that can be done, regardless, with the exception of massive amounts of money being dropped, that the school board could do to control that. And there is in that situation, which is why we left it off. But we'll, we will assume, include those assumptions for the next time, and with all the relevant caveats.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work on this, and I also defer to Dr. Robertson his best suggestion on how to get that data for us for Bayside Six in this conversation. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. So I'm just looking at slide six. And I'm just curious, because just looking at that slide, you would assume that all of Princess Anne was built in nineteen fifty-four, all of Betty Williams, F. Williams was nineteen sixty-three, and some of that information would make sense. You know, going to a school visit, you know, it's, it's pretty clear that when you're doing the visit that there are definitely parts of Princess Anne, I mean, just walking into the lobby, for example, looks significantly better than Betty F. You know, going to other parts of Princess Anne, certainly there are hallways, for sure, in Princess Anne that look like they were built, you know, back in nineteen fifty-four, to be sure. But I guess my question is, when they were determining this facility condition, did they look at the oldest areas of Princess Anne? I, I, I could, because it, a- as an overall score, I would, just from perception, walking in the building, it looks a heck of a lot better than Betty F. as an overall score. So I guess my question to you is, you know, how did they determine, and, and you might not know that, but I, I'm just curious how it was determined, based on facility condition for building areas, school facility condition, educational adequacy, you know, what areas of Princess Anne were they looking at in comparison to the other buildings? Because again, I mean, you know, of course, Kemp'sville High School is, is near and dear to my heart. You know, now that we have the new EBA area, that area looks fantastic. So I, I'm just curious, as an, as an overall score, as a, when they're determining those factors and indices, how, how were they determining that when you don't have two buildings that are both aged the same? And I'm, and I'm just curious how that was determined.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll figure out how much detail you wanna go into, and I may have to bring up.
Five twenty-one.
So, bird's eye view. While I appreciate being able to walk in the building as a, I consider myself a novice. I'm, I'm not a facilities expert. So when you go in and look at a building, that's entirely different from professionals going in and looking at the condition of the HVAC systems, the condition of the fire suppression systems, the condition of the roof, the condition of the electrical system, which is a challenge.
Okay, fair.
The condition of the pumping systems, which are related to sewage. It is not the same thing to go walk the halls and look at the school building as it is for professionals to go in and do a professional assessment of the condition, the condition of the building. I have two experts right here. I have a facilities expert that can talk about the, the ins and outs of how this was developed, and I can talk to you with our maintenance expert, who has gone through those schools, and both of them, and we've had conversations about the challenges associated with both schools. Prince Anne High School is pretty darn challenging for a number of things that are in there, including the electrical system.
Is that okay for now? Can you talk to them?
Yes, so that would be my question, and I would love to hear from both of you, both experts. And, you know, help us, because again, just, Mr. Freeman, I think, put it in towards very well. You know, we, we go in and the visual perception is, is maybe misleading. And so I would be curious, from a professional standpoint, how we are gauging that, because again, you know, you walk into the foyer, it, it looks fairly new. You, you know, you walk into the, the lobby of Betty F., and it, it's not quite as bright, impressive, whatever. But, so I, I, I would, I would really value that input as we're determ- making this decision individually, and then as a board, to help us figure out why Princess Anne, it, you know, has the higher numbers than Betty F. When visually, it, it looks like it should be opposite, so I would appreciate any professional input. Well, in some areas, yeah, in some areas.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. In looking at the slide.
Yep, that's the one.
The slide lists Betty F. Williams as being constructed in nineteen sixty-three, and I'm wondering if we have a typo on our school division site, 'cause it talks about it opening in September sixty-one, and then in sixty-two becoming integrated, but we have it here as constructed in sixty-three. And so I just wanna make sure that all of the information that we're looking at is accurate or needs to be updated in one place or the other.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. And when you were, Ms. Franklin was kind of making the, the point about the, the visual differences in the, the buildings, I, I think that it, one, we do have some extra years on one of the buildings that's not reflected on here, but elementary school students, I think, are harder on buildings on the aesthetic part that we're gonna see than maybe high school students who are perhaps a little more respectful or, or whatever of the surroundings, a little bit more aware of their surroundings, and maybe having some, some different pride in their environment. And so I, I think it is something that we have to weigh, that systems may be older in one building, but the learning environment that students have to learn in may look more worn and having an impact in a, in another school. The list here, the facility condition list, it says seventeen eighteen. Is that when those determinations were made about the conditions, not like within the last five or six or seven years?
No, that was done as part of the Long Range Facility Master Plan, which we conducted one in oh seven, oh eight, that was the first one, and then this was the updated one that was done in seventeen eighteen.
Okay, so those were the conditions as of seven years ago?
In seventeen and eighteen, yes. And those calculations were updated from the seven, eight calculations.
Okay, and in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight priority schools list, obviously Betty F. Williams wasn't making the, the top nine there. And Old Aragona wasn't on the top nine back in seven, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, although it is facility worse now. And so it, it makes me wonder, I, I don't have the expertise in construction about how those things may have changed along the way, or if the decision-making process in two thousand seven, two thousand eight had different influences than it had in twenty seventeen, eighteen and versus what our look at and decision-making processes are now, so.
Yes, Ms. Owens, it was on there in two thousand seven, eight, it's just noted as Kemp's Landing Magnet, so it's number eight.
Okay, so Dr. Robertson, I'm gonna let you off the hook for what you teed up, and I'm gonna give you a compliment to you, you and your team a compliment, which is, thank you for thinking, for playing offense, really, and always thinking about the what-ifs and what's next. So thank you for that. So you're off the hook until, yeah. And then to you, Mr. Freeman, I will say, you've given us our homework of choosing left or right, but your homework, sir, is to come back and explain to us and the community how we're going to pay for this.
Is that a joke?
No, but we have to offer some kind of explanation about how, you know.
So, so I'm glad you said that, 'cause it's, that's not a joke, right? Okay, so by selecting either path, this thing is not working, so I can't get there.
That's okay.
Regina, can you go to the?
Fair question.
The bar graphs, the first bar graph chart? So by just going left or right, again, simplify the process.
Right.
We go with this one, you're directing us as part of the next budget process to ensure that we're on track to be able to do a two-million-dollar increase over five consecutive years, starting no later than FY thirty. Next slide. Regina, can you go to the next slide? If we go right, and Prince Anne High School is the next one, you are directing us to build a, when we get to. you are directing us to build a, when we get to the budget season, to be on track, to have a three-point-eight-million-dollar increase over seven consecutive years, starting no later than FY twenty-eight.
The public needs to hear that. So I just want to make sure that that's repeated.
Thank you, I'm glad that you said that.
Yeah.
We will follow the direction from the board to be able to make those things work.
Yeah, and let me give a disclaimer here. Because, I mean, thi- this is the difficult part, the position you guys are in. And that's why I didn't share, there are other opportunities because you guys are in a position where you have three dollars and you have five dollars in bills. You can't pay all the bills, you've got three dollars. So how do you strategically use your three dollars? So we know that what we have right now for Prince Anne High School is roughly two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million. If that's the direction that the board takes, then we'll spend the next three months working on the design, and it may not be two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million based upon the discussions over the next three months. That's what we use that will impact this chart.
All right, and I see no more questions, no more colleagues in the queue. And so we will adjourn. It is five-thirty, and we will reconvene at six o'clock. Thank you.